Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Johnny and Fanny Ward Meeting. I guess you could arrive in pledge instant light.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public notice to this meeting, we show it to the Open Public Meeting Act has been given in the following manner by the Borough Clerk, posted in the bulletin board in her office, an email to retrospect at the Courier Post. Get a little public.
Chairwoman Cleveland.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Here.
Motion?
Here.
Mr. Pachas?
Here.
He's here.
Yeah.
Oh, he's hiding back tonight. That led us. Uh, Mr. Vidal.
Here.
Mr. Alkali.
Here.
Mr. LeBury.
Here.
Mayor Otis.
Here.
Mr. Ramirez, yeah? Ms. Thodds, here. Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
Mr. Box.
Here.
And Mr. Knight.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so motions in order for the approval of the minutes from the watchstart TV. Are there any questions or concerns with the minutes? Is there a motion to report except the minutes?
Any motion.
Mr. Vidal, Mr. Alkali, all favor? Anyone opposed? Under old business, Joyce has sent out emails to everyone. Your financial disclosure statements must be filed online by April 30th. Um, there should be a PIN number and everything with that email. So if anybody has any trouble getting onto a computer, it can be done on the Borough Clerk's office. Maybe, right, we can get anybody in.
Yours is up.
Yeah. Under new business, we have an application, nineteen oh one, which is McPeak, Rita's Water Ice. This is a use variance. So, Mr. Rowan, we're going to ask Mayor to, um...
Yes, yes.
Excuse yourself.
Yeah, replead yourself and, uh...
What do you want to do with this?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything else we have to vote on. So Mayor wants to do something.
See you guys. Do you want me? Okay, so, um... And David, if you're ready, we'll...
Yes, we're ready. People can bring you up and down.
Yeah, we can up. Square them up, see what we got. Get some ice cream.
Yeah, come on.
Good evening, sir.
So I've got witnesses. I have our architects here this evening. Mr. Smith, he's very testified with a drawing. I have some handouts. And then I've got representatives of the LLC, Mr. McPeak, who is the managing member, and, uh, Miss, Miss McPeak, who is the现任Chair. I don't know that you're on testimony, but she's here as well. So want to swear?
Yeah, so everybody, whether you give testimony or not, I just ask you to stand. And Steve, you'll swear too. I'll swear you in. And folks, you swear affirm that testimony you're about to give this board this evening is truthful, act your best to your knowledge.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll go through with each person individually and I'll just put their name, address on the records. So there's a clean record. Um, for everybody's benefit, if you are not familiar, this is essentially the relocation of Rita's Water Ice, which has been here in town. I'll say it was the Blackhurst Pike and the cross street right next to what used to be the Sicko. Now it's the Cooper. And it's moving. I don't, I don't think it's a tenth of a mile. I was there about a half hour ago. And I think it's about a tenth of a mile away on West Clement Bridge Road. So it's essentially the relocation of an existing business here in town to another location. And we'll offer testimony as to the reason for it.
Thank you.
Okay. So just a, it's my way of introduction. And I have a couple of housekeeping matters.
Yeah, why don't we do that now? So we'll give that to Joyce, our clerk, and, uh...
So a couple, a couple of housekeeping matters. First thing is proof of publication. Uh, this was noticed in the Sunday, March 31st, Courier Post. And we have proof from that. So we do satisfy the proof of those requirements. The next thing is with regard to the affidavit of service, the 200-foot list. I prepared that. We have certified the mail green cards. A notice was provided to all, and we received responses to the majority of them. And I actually have a list. There's about, uh, five or seven that have not... We didn't get the cards back yet, but they were set out.
Okay.
So that takes care of our, our road requirements. We have required to be an affidavit of service. That takes care of the housekeeping. And, uh, Madam Chair, if it's acceptable, I do have Mr. Box's letter. He provided that to me on Monday evening. And what I'd like to do is simply use that as a guide, go through that, review the questions, and we'll provide testimony as necessary.
Perfect, thank you.
And if I may, Director Smith, for...
Certainly.
Briefly describe the project. We'll be recording here, and there'll be some more testimony. All right, so, um, beginning. Name, business address, where are you?
Jack Smith, Bishop's Inn, architects, thirteen forty-four Jews Landing Road, Laurel Springs, New Jersey.
Uh, Mr. Smith, you are a West Dartmouth County Attorney.
Yes, sir.
How long have you been so licensed?
Um, since nineteen ninety-six.
Is your license in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Have you appeared, uh, before boards in this county in the state of New Jersey and offered your expert testimony?
Yes, many boards.
Can you estimate, in the last six months or year, how many boards have you appeared and given testimony?
Ten to fifteen.
And this particular plan, which will be described shortly, tell us, tell the members of the board exactly what type of plan that is.
Uh, what we have is, this is actually a set of construction documents for a tenant space at the location where Rita's going to go. Uh, we were asked to come in and lay out the equipment plan and also lay out the, uh, the access to the front, which has got multiple opening sliding windows there that are going to serve the patrons.
And in terms of these plans, are these plans that you would, plans of these types, you would normally prepare these as part of your practice?
Yes, I would.
Okay. And you can recognize the next word in the state of the testimony?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Bishop and Smith, the architects. So there's...
Thank you very much. Well, I always go with the project. If you could very, very briefly tell them about the project, what sort of designs are yours to provide for this one?
And essentially here, we just had an open vacant tenant space here. Uh, we were asked to come in and evaluate the space. Obviously, you can do an existing survey, lay out the existing equipment. That equipment layout is provided by Rita's. They have specialized in specific setups that they require. Um, that's, they, they look at this. The equipment layout is based on what they have. Uh, we have an existing ADA bathroom in the back that serves the employees. It's not accessible, but repelling strictly to serve the employees. Uh, in the front sales area, again, where most of the equipment for serving is located, uh, that's where the windows are going to be set up in the front there. To the right of these windows, I also have a blow-up that will be provided to you for those windows so you can see a little bit better, uh, what we're looking at. I have the left by seventeen up there, which you're going to see.
Those are just copies.
A little bit larger, but... I was having a dull time over there.
Yeah.
A slow one.
And that's why I'm a little, my thought will be a little easier for you guys to see.
So with regard to your, uh, customer, any interior seating at all?
There is no interior seating whatsoever. It is strictly employee, uh, seats.
And, and no exterior seating at all?
There's no exterior seating.
But really, the only change, for those people that are familiar with the particular building and the site, the only change that you're going to see is right now there's a door entrance to the building, fixed windows. The only proposed change is going to be to the doors.
Yes, we're going to, the existing glass windows that were in front there, the door's going to remain as is where it was. Uh, we're just removing the glass that is there. We're going to provide accessible windows. Uh, three in total. One's going to be ADA accessible, and the two others are standard windows. Uh, and they slide open again so they can be served by the employees.
Any questions? All right, and here.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Farla, perhaps, just let's step down. And, uh, Mr. Smith. All right, so Pete, you've been previously sworn, so you'll go to the record your full name and business address.
Uh, David McPeak, twenty-two Columbia Avenue, Portland, New Jersey.
And McPeak Enterprises, two LLC, is a New Jersey living lot building company?
That's correct.
Is it in good standing in the state of New Jersey?
Correct.
And you are the managing member?
Correct.
And also present is Beverly McPeak.
Correct.
And she's a, also a member of the LLC?
Yes.
Just by way of background for the board, McPeak Enterprises LLC is this entity that operated the existing Rita's Water Ice that was located on the Blackhurst Pike?
Since two thousand and fifteen.
Why don't you give the board a little background with regard to that particular location and the need to move or relocate?
Sure. Um, two thousand and fifteen, my late brother and I, my son-in-law's husband purchased the Rita's on the Blackhurst Pike. Um, I also own one in Portland for the last eight years. So we're running with how they operate. Um, purchased one on the Blackhurst Pike, fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Why, you have, let me ask you a question. You purchased it in two thousand and fifteen. How long had that been in that location?
I believe it was, that was one of the first Rita's. I believe it was in the late eighties.
Okay.
Uh, early nineties. It was there for several years.
Okay.
Um, so we purchased it in two thousand and fifteen. Two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, good years. What we expected, you know, what the performance showed, um, sales-wise. Um, two thousand and seventeen was when the Cooper Urgent Care was being built, um, and was being built over the summer months. So during construction, um, sales dropped drastically. Um, the following year, we felt it would bounce back. They did. Um, I think primarily it was because of the layout and the way they, it left our parking lot, our building. And I was attending the building, so it wasn't, you know, I didn't know.
Now, previously where, where Cooper is now, that, that used to be, for those of us that remember, that was the Seven-Eleven and Sicko gas station.
Sicko gas station, right.
When, when patrons would pull in off Clement Bridge Road or have access, did they have access to Rita's at that point?
They did. It was effectively pro-access, excuse me, through Seven-Eleven and Clement Bridge Road. And, you know, the new layout and the development eliminated that. So that and the way it configured our parking lot, um, really reduced our sales. I mean, our sales were down fifteen to twenty percent in those two years to such a point that I still have a lease on that building. It benefited me to come to a settlement with my landlord and buy out the balance of my lease to get out of there and come to a new location because the parking lot was empty.
So what were some of the factors? I mean, number one, you, you considered staying here in town? You wanted to be here more than you?
Sure.
Okay. What were some of the factors that went into looking into this location, identifying and securing this particular location?
We liked number one, that it was so close to the old location. Um, you know, people that were familiar with her who were before, there wouldn't be too much confusion with us moving. Because you can literally see the new building from the old building if you look down the side of the floor down there. Um, so that was one thing. You know, in this location, we like the parking. Um, there's, yeah, a lot more parking, easy access. Out the front of Clement Bridge, there's an access to the side street. Um, North is, yeah, just a better location.
But let's go, any questions with this plan, Madam Chair?
You go.
Okay, I'm here for just in terms of the plan. And so, so in terms of this particular facility, now, when you, this is not your own Rita's franchise location. So working with Rita's, do they dictate to some degree what you can and cannot do? And are you somewhat limited?
They, they do. They do. I mean, they, they dictate, as Mr. Smith said, they, you know, they dictate the layout. Um, but they actually input on the layout of the interior of the store, where the equipment goes, kind of what we can use. Um, you know, they dictate, uh, type of windows, service windows, they dictate your hours. Um, so it's a franchise. So, yeah, you're, what, the franchise?
The, uh, the hour, I mentioned the hours of operation, are they going to be the same or similar to what was in existence at that location?
Yes, the hours are, uh, twelve to nine most of the year. Um, summer months is twelve to ten, so it is...
And you've heard the testimony of Mr. Smith. So again, with regard to this site and the conditions on the site, aside from taking those windows and making them movable, that's the only, that's the only change of the process?
That's the only change of the process.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I could, I've got Mr. Box's letter, and I'm just going to go through some of the questions where he indicates that, uh, that they provide the testimony. So again, if they, Rita's Barred Ordinance, if they permit a conditional use in this particular zone, and for, for the record, Mr. Rowan, H two, three A. Let's see if we could, lots of eyes, again, this is more of a housekeeping matter. Initially, you will file the application. The, we indicated that it was, that it met twenty thousand square feet. And that was based on our understanding from the owner that looking at the parcel in total, it, it's absolutely twenty thousand square feet. However, there are three individual separate lots. So, uh, so technically, for that particular unit, we are below, and we would ask for, with regard to lots.
And also it's noted that it's not an undersized block in the C zone. It's, it's an informing block in the C zone. It's only for this conditional use. It had to be twenty thousand square feet.
Let's, let's deal with that traffic. A brief, brief debate. Will you give us some testimony with regard to expectations for traffic, traffic flow, rent to stay?
Sure. Um, as was stated before, there's no outside seating, no inside seating. So customers that come are really just going to come to the window, get their water ice, get their custard, go to their car. And the, the average stay would probably be five to six minutes.
Peak hours?
Peak hours would be between seven, eight thirty at night. Um, you know, and like I said, there's no more than, you know, five to six minutes they're in and out, or, you know, they're treating.
So then that takes care of, uh, three C and D with regard to, there's no outside seating. Takes care of number four, five, six, seven, uh, eight. Let's talk, let's talk about number nine, which is receptacles for trash and recyclables. What did you do in the previous Rita's location?
We had, um, trash bins outside that we put them out when we, when we opened in the morning. We put them out when we opened in the morning. We take them in at night and give them out and take to Canton. Cans are stored inside the building.
So and then is that your intent?
Yes. Again, that's a Rita's requirement. You put out a Rita's trash can, bring the trash can in and out.
Okay. Uh, testified with regard to the menu board. I think it's depicted in there. I want you to have a copy there in terms of that menu board, which is your center window there. Is that something where you get some guidance from Rita's in terms of the size and function of that menu board?
Yes, that's all standard.
And you'll require with regard to signage?
Yes, our intent is we're not going to do any of the sign even with signage that's already there. It's just changing the, uh, the name plate on the sign.
So there is, there is existing sign on location, and you're going to figure sign right there?
Existence signing on top of the location, there's an existing slot for our unit on the pipeline sign. The sign out front above.
Now, with regard to the, uh, the trash enclosures, if chasing the building, there's a concrete block or cylinder lock. It's enclosed, which understanding with regard to the trash?
The trash, um, at my previous location, um, I would put the trash, it was in the back, I would put it out and the borough would pick it up. Um, I'm assuming that's my intent to do as long as the borough's going to do that. If the borough's not going to do that, then I will have a contractor, you know, pick it up. The landlord, who actually has the smoke shop in the unit, he has a contractor pick his up once a week as it is now. So I would just give back on his contract if I had to.
Would the trash be in the trash enclosure?
Trash would be in the trash.
So there's not going to be an extra dumpster? There's no going to be no trash? Sorry.
There's one there now, actually. Right, so... In an hour.
There's one there now. I would utilize that. And if we had, thank you, twice a week.
Thanks. But I think you stay, all the trash in the back goes into trash enclosure. It's not going to be a, a freestanding separate dumpster out there in the back.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing in the back. I, I actually walked this evening. The, the back is pristine.
They eat the evidence anyway it goes. Just before that.
Yeah.
Which is what that means.
No, no, I haven't, yeah, I haven't put that on the record.
Yeah, but there won't be an additional dumpster if we need to have it, you know, picked up twice a week.
So that takes care of the, uh, the trash. Again, there's no, I'm going down to check for the record where we are on that, it looks like. There's been drive-through facilities. We've dealt with trash and G. So that's all.
One question about trash.
All right.
The trash cans would be in a sidewalk area. And again, we're prepared exactly where, but in the sidewalk area, not in, uh, impeding any pedestrian access, and it will not be located out in the parking area.
Correct, correct. Immediately, immediately in front of that particular unit, there's, there's a sidewalk area.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to be exact. We just want to make sure that it's not in the parking area and it's not impeding any pedestrian.
No, it would be against the front window of the building.
By my estimation, there's probably eight to ten parking just in front, meeting in front of the building and one, one interior, there's, what's our, sorry. And be brought in, and it won't be stored overnight. So if you want to have to worry about manholes or kids or somebody going by grabbing the trash cans out, that would just cover that.
I just had a question on the cans.
Sure.
Um, maybe a little leeway due to the fact that having the cans underneath the E, and there's other doors with egress issues? Does there's three other, well, possibility of three other businesses there?
Yeah, there's one empty for now. They're right, it's a four-joke.
Correct. So I don't know about the location of the trash being on that walkway, the cans themselves.
Well, you only need...
For the waste.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the person for something underneath the, the four-foot clear path.
Well, it means to be aggressive though, to the, to the curb, to the sidewalk. But I'm not, there's room to, if we put it in between the two doors. But what I'm saying is if we put multiple cans out.
I would like, yeah, I would like to defer that to code officials for their egress, you know, which is coming over and above.
Sure. I'm, I'm just saying, if we can move them out of that area, maybe put them adjacent to the side of the building. Those are decorative cans. We have them out here, but they're going to be similar to what we had.
Right.
Which are, they're not obtrusive to view.
Right.
There'll probably be, especially on the one side, there's, there's a grass area next to the one store.
Right.
And that's behind bollards also.
Right.
So the cans will need to be kept in the impact.
It'll almost be behind bollards.
You have that?
Yes.
I think, I think that would be a problem. And we put that in resolution, we tell them to follow that.
And will be placed behind bollards? Is that what you...
Well, if, if it becomes a problem with the placement.
Yeah, I, I, I don't believe that's necessary because it already has the curve.
I think, yeah, and, and we're going to say that the condition is any sidewalk trash containers will not impede any business.
And just to satisfy... I'm just saying to the satisfaction of the borough's code officials.
Right.
Because that really, that's where it lives.
Yeah. I would prefer not to put them over on the side by the bollards because quite frankly, I don't think people are going to take the trash over there from where Rita's is.
There's actually parking in this area. There's, I actually parked my car there tonight. So if you have a chance to park in it.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can call upon something, but I'm just wanting to put that out there.
Order with the code officials.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you got charge also. Yeah, the one side of the parking lot is, you might have a vehicle hit it. The opposite side, there is a little grassy area. But to Dave's point, then you're relying on folks to, or to walk.
Exactly.
You know, and not get that far.
If we have to have a, a smaller can, maybe, yeah. We can get, you know.
I was just asking.
So Mr. LeBury can visit the site once you guys are open?
Yeah, well, it keeps familiar with him, so.
We're not far.
I, I don't think there are a problem intended to test, so.
No, no.
Not expecting any problem. All right, so that's the, here are the trash enclosures. Uh, again, uh, H four, the letter I J, no drive-through. And then none of that applies. And then again, denting crosswalks, none of that to support the board because again, there's no side improvement, so. I think we covered everything.
Sam, just a, a, your, this, the trash enclosures. The, you, the resolution states that the applicant will utilize the existing trash enclosures.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, for that part, definitely. Yeah, for the disposal, for the waste of it, there, absolutely, definitely.
Hey, there's, I have one question for you. When the, how the parking lot is there, and when you pull up and where the bollards are, so you have maybe three, four feet between that and the window, correct? Like, I just don't, my own opinion is I don't want the line to form that goes down into the parking lot. Now we have an issue.
Right.
Now, on your old spot, you had fifteen, twenty feet surrounded by everything. So people combine up to a window here. I guess you, I don't know how you control that or whatever, but it just happens one side or the other. Or do these signs stating, say, hey, please form to this or that? So they're not in the parking? And we can do that. If it's a, if it becomes an issue, we can put, like, um, you know, ground the line and kind of have it keep intact. We, we could do something where, um... We could do something. Well, you see what I'm saying, like... For your benefit, I don't, I don't think it's going to be as much, it's going to be an issue as it was even at the old location
be an issue as it was even at the old location, because there were two benches at the old location. So people tended to, tended.
Well, they sat there, but hangout lights themselves, Dave, I was in them. They formed and do not, you know.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. People, but I just don't want to see now we have people coming in, driving in, and people standing in, you know, the parking spots to.
I mean, at that point, at that point, there's, I mean, if you had to, you could probably designate the spot right in front of the windows, no parking spot. If you had to, I guess.
Yeah, but then you're not.
Yeah, you have that volume, but I'm just saying.
You could probably add a graphic to your window, show you're lying. Where's at the right?
Yeah.
You show a little, and just directly, they're going to have the police side and shut you down.
I mean, obviously, we don't agree in safety situation, we have to walk into the parking, we have an issue.
Dave, are you going to be able to possibly put a sign up on the old location saying we've relocated where your, where the property owner is?
Um, like I said, I bought out of that lease and I don't know the name of it, but yeah.
Okay. He's not happy with you, huh?
Nah, I think he's happy, we're fine. I mean, you know, we came to an agreement somewhere.
Well, you do, you do know that you are allowed to have for thirty days, even though you're not adding any signage to the actual building or anything, you know, you are allowed for thirty days to have banners and whatnot. And Mr. Knights, our code official, he can give you the parameters, you know, just so you can let people know.
Yeah.
That you moved, because it's a little bit off the, it's a little bit off the road. Like, it's at the end of my street. So I looked up, I smiled, like, okay. But, you know, if you don't look for it, you know what I mean, where the, where the actual windows are, it's a little bit off the, off this, the beaten path, so, you know, we, we have no problem with you guys putting something nice up to, you know, to help your business, you know, getting off the speed.
Appreciate that.
No problem. Are there any other questions for the applicant, professionals?
If I could just go through my letter, this is not a case for conditional use variance. If the applicant had met all of the conditions, he would be here, because if it's a use provided, he'd meet all the conditions. The applicant has provided a testament of which conditions they are meeting and how they're meeting, which ones they are not, I'm not going to go through them again. The board has to be satisfied, and this is on page four of my letter, this is a, a use variance, so the board has to be satisfied that the application will advance the purposes of municipal land use law and that the proposal will also advance the town's master plan, which in my opinion it does, because it is contemplated in our master plan and it completes our ordinance to have these sorts of service windows. The second thing that you have to look at is, and that's the positive criteria, the second thing is, can this variance be granted without being a substantial detriment to our zoning plan, our zoning ordinance, and the general public? So you have to make those balance, that's your decision point. Does the positive outweigh the negative? And can you grant that, can you approve this without the conditions?
Okay. At this point in time, if Sal, Dave, if it's over your presentation?
Yeah, just in terms of the positive criteria, it's essentially the relocation of an existing building, which I think is an additional positive criteria. Rather than losing a business here in the community, it's because of the circumstances that were testified to, it's a relocation of the community, so I think that's an additional positive.
And I'm not trying to provide testimony to the applicant, but I'm just sort of summarizing the testimony, that a lot of the conditions were more contemplated for drive through windows and drive throughs, not just a walk up service window. So a lot of the items that are contained there are not applicable, as you saw in our review letter, and also it's testified where they don't have the outdoor seating and all those other things, they don't have the menu board and all that. So that really is just a walk up service.
It's very beneficial that Chad, sorry originally, I don't know if you're aware, he just did that other egress driveway on North Oakland Avenue, that's probably two years old peak, I think.
Yeah.
So that's really good, you know, for your traffic flow.
Absolutely.
So that was, that was.
That's one of the things that.
Yes. It's a positive criteria in my mind, is that, you know, you have.
Use after going to Huntsbridge.
Yes, absolutely.
Sure.
You know, I mean, people can safely not have to stand on the brakes, they can make that turn, and they come in, come into North Oakland Avenue, so that's fortunate.
We have nine members, are they all sitting members up?
Yeah, we got, we've got to get five confirmed votes.
Out of seven.
We've got seven?
Out of seven, five out of seven.
Right, which are the seven that are the voting?
We're going to have the one, two, three, four, five, six, and then we're going to, and then we're going to seat Mrs. Dodd, I believe, Mr. Dodd.
Next.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't sign up.
Scott's there.
It's just fine.
Scott, we're, we're a big half on you, because you're like, you're hiding behind, no, we've got these seven of you. Either the two or.
So we're going to do alternates and not vote, but you can, that's right, as you have.
Okay, at this point in time, if you're going to present, take, we're opening the meeting up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, this application only, please move to the microphone, state your name and address, and state your concern or your support.
See, now, the public, I make a motion to the public portion.
Motion by Mr. Offaly and secondly by Mrs. Cusson to close the public portion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Rowan?
Yes, what the applicant is presenting tonight is an application for conditional use variance for a site located at one thirteen A, West Huntsbridge Road, block sixty, lot three. Um, we need a motion to approve that conditional use. And pursuant to this, the plan, we can refer to the, as a site plan prepared by Bishop Smith, they are also asking for a bulk relief because the lot in question is, I think, fifteen thousand square feet.
It's not a bulk, and it's the twenty thousand square, I mean, the, twenty thousand square feet is part of the condition of conditional use.
So we should do that under the.
Yeah, the actual lot size is conforming for the feet, for the, for the.
But not for.
Commercial zone.
Okay.
So there's no, the only variance, the only relief required this evening is the conditional use variance to allow the walk up window and the configuration and with the attributes as the applicant.
And we, we don't have to cite the variant, I mean, in the resolution that is permitted because it's undersized?
We just have to say that if the walk up window is permitted as conditional use, they have not met all the conditions.
Okay.
So that's what they're seeking the relief for.
And in addition, the testimony of the applicant indicates that they will conform to our signage ordinance, which will be made part of the resolution. The, one of the other conditions will be that they will be utilizing the existing trash enclosure, which is existing with the practices. And the other condition that the sidewalk trash containers will not, will be located as not to impede any pedestrian traffic to the satisfaction of the borough of Runnig Code Official. We'll trust that if, you know, once the business is up and running.
Sir, motion on the floor to approve the resolution as read?
I make a motion.
Mr. Offaly and Mrs. Cusson, may we have both of these please?
Mrs. Cunha?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Cusson?
Yes.
Mr. Pachaski?
Yes.
Mr. Penello?
Yes.
Mr. Offaly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBury?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Dodd?
No, no, we're.
We're.
Scott, did you get Scott? Did you get Scott?
Yes.
That's seven.
Okay, so he's, so Mary's home.
No matter.
No, no, I know Mary.
No.
No, they're not.
Only seven.
They're for six.
Okay, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, we see a lot of love.
Get the word.
Yes, you will.
Exactly.
No doubt about it. Okay. All right, at this point in time, we'll open up the meeting to the welfare. Anyone here wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please move to the microphone and state your name and address.
See, now, the public wishes to speak, I make those to those public.
Oh, oh, come on, okay. Good night, thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, I live on sixty-four South Little Nellie. Um, I was just here because I got a notice, south of Toyota.
Okay.
With the, um, for variance of paving.
Yes, Toyota, Toyota.
They already paved it.
Right, and that's why they have to come in front of the Toyota, did not provide us with their plan, did not provide the proxy reports that we asked for, that is why they're not being heard planned until they provide us with the proper stuff.
Okay, because I'm just looking around.
No, we're going to make them renotice, we'll make them renotice when they finally get.
Not only to mail it to you, but also to pay for them, and your application is due to the paving without prior approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I had a question as to Keith.
Absolutely.
Oh, back when they were doing it, in the middle of paving, I happened to be home, and I could look out, and I could go back window, and I says, oh my God.
Yeah, they did not have permits to do that.
I was wondering, because I know you did.
Yep.
My concern was, you know, you know what it is, all the stuff with the needs.
Yep, that's why we're making them get the proper deposit.
And the only other thing I want to bring up, it's not one here, is that, I don't know whether you noticed, but all went along, they were putting all used cars back there, not new. This was supposed to be for new cars only, when it's been debated.
Okay, yeah.
And now they're putting Jeeps and whatever they feel like it back there.
And.
Because our concern was that.
Worry about leaks.
The leaks of transmission and the oil coming down.
Well, I mean, that, I guess Keith, that's something you're going to maybe have to take a look at, maybe you have a copy of the resolution that we approved, what year is that, two thousand and seven?
Two thousand and eleven, I believe.
Yeah, two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven, so, I mean, I know they've changed management since then.
Oh, I know that, that's why they probably didn't know.
Yeah, Mr. Perry's no longer there, so it's a possibility that the, that the new manager's not up to speed on what the parameters of their resolution was.
Right.
So Keith, if you would mind, maybe you can make sure he's made aware of that.
Sure.
And, and I hate to be the used car police, but I totally agree with you.
Yeah, because you brought that up.
That was the reason, we didn't want to have.
Back in the day.
Lowed leakage and coming down, so the new cars were.
My concern was also the water, because you know, I'm at the lower end where the easement comes through.
Yep.
And if they, they got it tarred in, the water just runs down.
I, I had to contact, but the applicant's engineer is fully aware that they have to provide a new stormwater management report and the impacts on it. I actually was able to review the old report, and they asked for a waiver of the stormwater, and I indicated to them that the way they presented their report in the prior approval, it is definitely between stone and paving, and the way they did their calculations prior, so.
Even if the stone gets tarred, it's still, the water's going to seep down.
The way they did their calculations.
They put those big huge drains, supposed to look, act like a French drain, right?
They're going to have, they're going to have to demonstrate compliance.
Yeah, I know they have regular, you know, I know they have the drains still.
They'll, they'll have to submit the full stormwater.
Okay, so I'll get another letter.
Nice one. If we approved their, their original, um, variances, were you affected by any of the runoff before they paved it?
On the side, well, before the house is there, there is an e, there's an empty lot, which, which I sold. I had a very, you know, that, I went through credits and everything.
There was a pipe that went through.
There's a pipe that still goes through under there, and that's where all the water would run down, and we had heavy, heavy rains, you know. But, but when the bank came in, I know it used to be downers years ago, right? Okay, when the bank came in, they put drainage, which helped a lot.
Hey, that changed the order.
Yeah, yeah, so that helped a lot. But now, well, you know, between Justin's house and my house, that's, that's sort of where, you can't really, you can see it sometimes, but you know it's there, I can tell by my sub pump.
Right.
It's going off more technically now, and, well, we're having a lot more rain.
Yes, I have a lot more water.
It's a concern, you know, I mean, we always have waters problems.
They will have, they will have to comply with our.
Because the water runs down from, from its grid and especially the, you know, black press pipe, and each chamber, and we're the bottom pool. And I know across the street, John's, his pump is old.
There's been water in front of my house for four months.
Yeah.
And I break about that far from the curb out, there's water in front of my house for the past four months.
And I know Justin, he have, I told him not to park his car out in the street there.
Yeah.
And finally, he got flooded out, that car flooded, so now, now he doesn't park it on the, he was parking for, you know, the drain, so don't do that.
For a drain, yeah.
Because you know, I mean, you had it not that way.
Pat knows, Miss Pat knows that.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll definitely, we're going to make sure they renotice when we do, we don't have the time.
I mean, there's nothing I can do about it, if, you know, it's there, it's there, but my concern is, if they can, if they can fix the car issue anyway, I'm supposed to be.
That's the easy fix. That's the easy fix, they don't do it.
Yeah.
That's the easy fix, you just don't, they're told not to do something, you just don't do it. And if they do do it, then they're going to be cited, and then.
But see, like you said, the new owner's probably there.
Yeah, it's still the new owner, Ed still owns it, but I've, he's longer than manager, but I've, best of my knowledge, Ed still owns it, so.
Oh.
Yeah, but that's, Keith, you go out there and make them aware of it, and better know, don't tell them, he's going to be by there, blow some malt, and we'll count cars.
Okay.
What happened with it?
I'll never forget when they were putting that variance in.
Yeah, I know.
You saw the mudslide.
I know, and, I mean, I just.
And they said, we'll come around and get it off. How can you get the mud?
They did, I mean, I want them to be successful, I want their good business in town, I want to see them be successful.
Right.
But they do have to comply, and that's why we're asking them to come back in, because they should not, they should not, yeah, they shouldn't have paved without, they shouldn't have paved without getting the proper studies done, and having our engineer approve the studies, and making sure it wasn't going to be a problem going forward, and they didn't do it, so unfortunately, we're going to have to go backwards a little bit and, you know.
And if it stays, maybe they can put some more, like there's Brady, Brady drains in maybe down for, I don't know.
That's what Mr. Box's expertise is.
Well, yeah, I have two on either side, and it's like, yeah, I don't, I can't see, I don't know down there, and there's any drains down here.
We have to wait and see, yeah.
To catch some of that water.
See what the impact is, and what the impact is from going to stone to paving, so that's what they have to demonstrate through that in our.
Yeah, they're going to say that the stone gets tarred over a period of time.
I know, that's.
They didn't, they didn't want to, they didn't want to go through these, that is their problem.
But.
Change, you know.
And they can say that, but our ordinance follows the New Jersey Department of Modern Architecture, stormwater management rules, so they can say, you know, it's going to get hard, but that's, that's not a rationale for how we do calculations under the EDP rules, so they're going to have to follow the bulk, and we're going to review it by the law.
We'll bring up the thing, they haven't, they haven't, I mean, if you have the, the resolution from two thousand and eleven, well, they, they haven't, they haven't kept up with cleaning up between the back of the fence and the back of our property.
Oh, that's a problem between my fence and.
That's a mess too, so we're going to, we're going to try to address that all at one time, you know, that they have not done that, and, you know.
Isn't that, is that, is that the borough's property though, between our fences? Which is like the electric company.
Now, there's an easement for PSC and G to go back there and wear the high tension wires, or they'll have to go back there and trim those trees as they see fit.
Which they did.
As they see fit to protect their high tension wires, but no, that, that property belongs to Runnig Toyota, and.
Oh, it's still.
Yeah, they're supposed to be maintaining that.
I mean, not for poison ivy and everything.
Yeah, I know, they're going to need to do that as well.
Yeah, okay, good.
We're going to try, I mean, you know, again, it's, Keith's one gentleman, and it's hard for Keith to police all these things, he has, you know, he has people coming in, they want to move the house, they need a, they need a CO, he has somebody wanting to open the business.
Yeah.
So that the police, one thing constantly is, is very hard for a small town like us to do.
Well, I didn't know when I found, when I saw, I didn't know to approach you, I called Pop.
That's what you want, right there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you're not, um.
Did you speak to Karen? Karen Lee?
No, no, no.
He's not Karen.
Mark Basile.
Mark Basile.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my vice president, that you.
Yeah, but Cyrus touched base with him.
Yes.
On the original.
Yep.
And he's a zoning violation, I didn't do that, I thought you.
Yeah, for any zoning violations, it should go to the zoning officer.
Okay. So I'll get another letter.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Beth, have a good evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to call, please?
Please.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am. Good evening.
Christine Schreier, eighteen West Sixth Avenue, I wonder if you could address a rumor that we're hearing about these zoning violations?
We'll try.
Okay, the latest rumor I've heard is that the language is going to be changed from non-condemning to arrogant, which is our home.
No, that's totally.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you put that in writing?
It is in writing.
It is in writing.
It's on the website.
That it's not going to be changed in the future?
Don't need to, it's in the, it's, it's in writing, it's not, no condemnation, we can't change that, we're not going to change that. It's not going to change, I promise you.
It will not change.
That's not what we're here.
I'm making.
No, and we like that you like your house.
We've been here a long, long time.
We like that you like your house, and, no, it's not going to change, you have our word.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Yes, sir.
Joe Perry, three oh one Center Ave, I'm trying to get a pool, and we live on a corner, and we keep getting, you know, but it's not a true corner, it's, so it's right on the corner of Clarifor Center, so it's where that big U is, where everybody pretty much turned around, so every time, we're putting four permits up, we don't have to, both sides are, so we don't have a backyard, we have two side yards on the front yard. So the first one we put on the third ad side and was denied, and then we, on the other side of the house, or not even near a corner, we got it denied, and we just, our whole text was we live on the corner.
Who denied you, sir?
Uh, Germans.
He submitted a zoning application.
Oh, yeah.
It's under the two front yards, he put in for a front yard fence with the, the way that he intended to install it, meant the definition, in my opinion, of the code for the two front yards. And he's advised to apply for a, for a variance.
For a bulk variance.
Right, to install the pool and the fence.
Above ground or?
Above ground.
Above. Then he's got to come in for just a variance because you're showing, it's like a hair circle where he did.
Yeah.
So he's going to have, is that the way it reads of, Keith?
Yes, there's a setback requirement on the pool also, so the only way I can say.
Did he show you diagram or tablet on the, again, surveys?
Yeah, yeah.
I said, I put surveys.
Yes, it's a bit of surveys. But for him to conform, it would not be, he would have to put it in his backyard, essentially.
Which we don't have.
Which, yeah, it's too small.
You'd have to submit an application to this planning board or a leave from the requirements of the town's ordinance, and Keith cannot be determined which bulk variances you would have to apply for. But the only way that voting permits could be issued is if you have a zoning permit. Keith can issue a zoning permit because it does comply with our ordinance. The only way you can get relief from that is by approval by this planning board, it's the only way.
And what can we not, Keith, what are we unable to achieve with this plan right now? Does it set back for the pool?
Well, the side yard fence being two front yards.
And what, sir, what are you asking for as far as the height of the fence?
Six foot, four foot privacy, two foot less.
Which is something we've talked about also with pools, I mean, you know, so he's going to need relief for that too, as far as the.
Yes.
Do you want to need relief for that, you're going to need that, is that on your plan, sir?
For, well, there's, how I have my house, the house is set, you know, in the one side, I can see that's great on a corner, I'm okay with that, but on the other side, it's nowhere near the corner.
I'm going to.
The Center Ave inside, you know. The Center Ave side.
What I'm getting at is you're going to want to shut, I don't want to waste your time and make you come back again. If you're, if you're going to speak with Mr. Knight, you're going to want to have everything on your plan, and the fencing is going to be part of it because you're going to need relief to put up a six-foot fence as well, where four foot is permitted.
Okay, so what if I put up a four-foot fence, would that, do I need?
You can put up a four-foot fence, but it has to be see-through construction.
So the chain link fence that I have now?
Right, you are, but you also have to consider that you're going to need a barrier for the pool, whatever you're intending, so if you want to use the six-foot fence as the barrier, it's, it would be to your advantage to apply for the variance.
The barrier is 42 inches for the pools or 48?
48.
48, so it's 40. The other thing that, just keeping in mind, that if you are going to be putting a fence in the front yard, we would recommend, well, we're going to cite it, cite Triangle Astro Standard indicating that the fence would have to be 14 and a half foot away back from the face of the curb. That way, anybody coming up and down would be impeded at all.
Per vehicular visual obstruction.
Yeah.
You're saying from the straight side to the fence, that's.
The face of the curb.
Okay.
You know, out in the street.
Yeah.
Coming back 14 and a half feet, that's the first place you would have a opaque fence that would be permitted. The see-through fence, there's no restriction.
Okay.
But if you're putting like a six-foot high privacy fence, it would have to be 14 and a half foot back from the face of the curb, not your property line face of the curb.
Yeah, that way nobody can, you know, they pull up, they can see whether, you know, you can't have a wall there.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but where he's considering putting that pool, there's no impediment from the traffic.
He's not, he's not a good corner.
Yes, where I want, both not on the, it's really not, it's really not an arc, it's a straight, then the front yard is where the curb.
Curb's around.
And the first permit that's been put in was right on the corner of Third Ave. I can see that, that's fine.
Is there any driveways on that straightaway?
On which straight?
On where?
On Center Ave?
His side, his side.
Yeah, I have the driveway right there.
Yeah, so that's, that's also why you're not, that's why you have to be 14 and a half feet because people are going to be coming back down the driveways, and they'll get fancy, and then they can't see it now. That's where the 14 and a half feet is that driver's option.
And then, why can't he use the fence he has there now, it's a four-foot, so what else has to be put up?
I'm just saying, the 14 and a half foot is if it's a opaque fence, meaning that it's solid.
Yes.
If it's a see-through fence, I don't care where it is.
So if he puts it, maybe Keith can, so when you put that fence, I mean, the pool on the Center Avenue side, if he has that four-foot chain link now, he don't need another fence, correct?
Well, if he's not going to want this six-foot fence for privacy.
I would have, but if that's anything that's holding me up, I'll put four up.
Correct.
And then.
That's what I'm saying, why can't he just use the existing fence he has there now?
Well, he can if he, again, if he doesn't want the private.
Right.
But then they set something up, set that.
Yeah, there's a.
Well, that you have to come in.
Then we're bull set.
That's not.
Yeah.
No, if we had a backyard, we want to, this is a, a avenue.
It's an unusual shape prop, it is.
And that's what your, that's what your basis would be for an application to the board and the basis of the relief that you would want.
He would have put it on the Center Avenue side.
Right, there's also a 30-foot setback from the front street line for a pool.
Then he's got to get a relief for it.
That's it, yes. So that's why even without the fence, if you were satisfied with the fence and not.
I'm sick for that.
No, it's first, from the radius all the way back. But where that port is hit, it's now.
It's so big.
Yeah.
You're going to put a candy-shaped pool, you got a candy-shaped pool.
That's exactly what my wife wants, she's a candy-shaped. So I need to.
So long and short of it, because I don't think we should deliberate too much, it's going to be a potential application.
Right, yeah.
Long and short of it, if you resubmit to Mr. Knight, and you need to submit an application for the bulk variances that are required for whatever you're seeking.
And I would suggest, and I'm sure Steve would recommend too, that you have a professional help your plot down on the survey, don't just draw it in yourself.
I think, I think with Mr. Knight's help, only if it's these few bulk variances.
Okay.
I think they do, I think the homeowner's sketch would be.
As long as there's measurements, because what the board would want to say is that, well, yeah, this is what you came in with, but it was put somewhere else.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, I.
So, but just having depicted on your survey there was, was that your.
Draw up the scale as best you can on the survey with actual written dimensions, and that way we know exactly where.
And Steve will do a review on it?
Yeah.
And once Steve doesn't review one, that, that, he's our eyes, he's our eyes, you know what I mean, so he'll do some.
I object, someone might understand that this could be a homeowner-prepared application, and.
Oh, no, I was going to say you had to have a lawyer, but we had applications where they come in and hand for all, and then all of a sudden it's filled, yeah, yeah, it's not the purpose of this.
As long as it's a mix, I'll make, I'll make sure it's, yeah.
Okay, so now do I have to re-submit permits, or can I just change the permits that I've already submitted?
No, you can allow the existing permits, which I deny.
Yeah.
Then you'll just make application to the board for the variance.
Okay, can I get what you have?
No, you don't.
There's probably an application, logging into the fee schedule.
And, and.
Keith, what's the schedule?
You have to put an application fee and money in escrow.
Sure.
Sections you wanted, yeah.
And escrow is for, this is the first one I have prepared.
For the attorney and for the engineer to review.
Review. That way you do it once, you do it right, and you go swimming.
And this.
Everybody comes in.
And this process, this process is not unique to Rond me.
$50 application.
I mean, this was land use law, you can look that up, it prescribes exactly how we have to go about non-conforming applications and how you get relief. It's prescribed by statute, so we have to follow it to the T because we cannot change it. It's a higher jurisdiction, so municipal land use law requires all these steps and procedures.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Hopefully we'll see you next month, sir.
Uh, this will.
Okay, have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah. If you want to call me, look for blood, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Manella, motion by Mr. Offerly, all in favor, vote for a portion.
Aye.
All right, with that, boom. Mr. Manella and Mr. Offerly. And all in favor, we're all in favor. And with that, are there any other motion to adjourn?
Any questions there?
All right, Mr. Pachasky and Mr. White, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:56, thank you very much.